Ready. Las personas que necesitan traducción simultánea a nada más un recoratorio sí necesitan la traducción y necesitan un dispositivo para escuchar la traducción de la junta a español. Las señoritas ahí atrás están disponibles para proveerles los dispositivos. Sí pueden ir en este momento para que no se pierdan a la junta. Creo que ya todos lo tienen. Yo creo que ya estamos. Vamos a dar comienzo, we're gonna start our meeting. So, welcome to the Caléxico City Council, Caléxico Development Successor Agency, Caléxico Financing Authority, regular meeting agenda. Today is Wednesday, December 4, 2024, 6:34 PM. Call to order, and we start with Roco.
Mayor Camilo García.
Here.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Here.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Tallin, that is absent, we have quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll go ahead and stand up and we'll head with the pledge of allegiance. So, Mr. Legaspi, you can lead us on that.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, where there are individuals who may be in this room, so whatever you can live in, with your statements.
Yes, thank you. Recent segment. Together, we pledge to provide effective services in an courteous and respectful manner to improve the quality of our life for all in our leading order community. We will take it.
Now, Dean, excuse me, Deacon Alfonso Salas, who is our vacation, please, Alfonso.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And let us begin our prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask this evening for a productive and peaceful evening. We ask especially for extended confidence that they continue to govern in a productive, honest, matterful integrity and justice for all the residents of the festival. That they always look the best in their actions they take, the residents of the festival, first and foremost. May there be special history, we go to the peace and growth of the area.
Mayor. Carlos, close session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmen, items one through five that described on today's agenda, we received direction on those items, what are reportable actions were taken, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna go with approval of the agenda, adding two items.
Correct, correct item. The first item is approval of a MOU between the City of Caléxico and the Provo County Department of Public Health and the City of Caléxico Fire Department, and Resolution Number 2024. This item became the attention of the city after the posting, and we need to take action before the next council meeting.
So we'll go ahead and take that one as 12-8?
12-8, correct.
Okay. And then we're also going to add a presentation that will be under, after, that will be 6-8. And that will be a presentation on the Serie del Caribe. Okay. So with that, if I can get a motion for to approve that agenda?
So move.
Roco.
Mayor Camilo García.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tallin, that is absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to presentations. We'll go ahead and start with the proclamation. The Lunar Year 2025 requested by Councilmember Romo. And now we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. "Caléxico City Council Proclamation Honoring the Lunar New Year. Whereas the Caléxico City Council recognizes and honors the rich cultural history of the Asian Pacific Islander (AAPI) community in Caléxico and the importance of their traditions and heritage passed down through the generations. And whereas the Lunar Year celebration is their most significant holiday dating back thousands of years rooted in ancient tradition, and it is celebrated by many families in Caléxico and the world, symbolizing the arrival of the new year of good health and prosperity. And whereas the Lunar New Year will begin on January 29, 2025, and will end on February 16, 2026. And whereas the City of Caléxico wishes to show support and solidarity to our Asian American Pacific Islander friends, family, and neighbors, and recognize their irreplaceable contributions to our history, to our story. As the Year of the Snake begins, we wish happiness and good fortune to all. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Caléxico honors hereafter the Lunar New Year, in witness whereof, here unto my signature and official seal of the City of Caléxico on this fourth day of December 2024. Mayor Camilo García." Now, Councilmember Romo will read that one in Spanish.
El Ayuntamiento de la Ciudad de Caléxico hace la siguiente proclamación honrando al Año Nuevo lunar. Considerando que el Ayuntamiento de la Ciudad de Caléxico reconoce y honra la historia cultural de la comunidad asiática americana e isleños del Pacífico (AAPI) y la importancia de sus tradiciones y herencia que se pasa a través de las generaciones. Y considerando que la celebración del Año Nuevo lunar es el día festivo con más significado que remonta miles de años atrás y está arraigado en una tradición ancestral. Y es, celebrando por muchas familias en Caléxico y en el mundo entero, simboliza la llegada de un nuevo año de buena salud y prosperidad. Y considerando que el Año Nuevo lunar empieza el 29 de enero de 2025 y termina el 16 de febrero de 2026, creo que corresponde a...
Serpiente.
A la serpiente, ¿no? Serpiente de madera. Considerando que la Ciudad de Caléxico desea mostrar su apoyo y solidaridad para nuestros amigos, familia, y vecinos de la comunidad asiática americana e isleños del Pacífico y reconoce su irreemplazable contribución a nuestra historia. Con el comienzo del año de la serpiente de madera, les queremos desear felicidad y buena fortuna a todos. Ahora, por lo tanto, se decreta que la Ciudad de Caléxico honra de aquí en adelante el Año Nuevo lunar. Firma nuestro mayor, el señor Camilo García.
Si podemos tener a los representantes que estén aquí para recibir la proclamación, si pueden acompañarnos aquí.
Por favor.
Y se lo pueden presentar.
Sí. Ahorita se van a presentar cada uno de ellos, pero el mayor les va a dar el reconocimiento y en español y en inglés les va a dar la proclamación a cada uno de ustedes, ¿no? Y tomarán la palabra alguno de ustedes de cómo va a estar el evento y todo lo que se viene, ¿no? Tan hermoso evento que van a realizar. Si gustan pasar para que el mayor les pueda dar la proclamación.
Va a ser todo.
Buenas noches, Ciudad de Caléxico y a todas las personas que nos acompañan. Respectable Mayor de Caléxico, Mr. Camilo García. City Manager, Mr. Juan Contreras. Mayor Protem, Mr. Javier Moreno. Respectable miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Alejandro Lee. Mi dirección es 1241 Rosas, aquí en Caléxico. Resido en Caléxico desde 1973. Me acompañan mis compañeros y miembros de la Asociación Binacional de Emprendedores de ambas Californias. Quiero presentar al señor Roberto Pérez. A licenciado Fernando Marín Rivas. Al señor David Colado. Y Luis Rafael García Pérez. Los acompaño en este momento. Como fundador de la Academia de Artes Marchiales de Caléxico, se hizo una invitación a la mencionada Asociación Binacional, a la cual yo soy su representante cultural aquí en el Valle Imperial, en Caléxico y en el Valle Imperial. Y gracias a la promulgación que se hizo con ustedes aquí en el Consilio para la celebración del Año Nuevo lunar, también conocido como el Año Nuevo Chino, que es una propuesta por miembros del Consilio, la señora Gloria Romo. Nuestra presencia esta noche es para hacer la petición pertinente y darle continuidad a dicha proclamación. Para este evento estamos pidiendo a los miembros del Consilio de la Ciudad de Caléxico su apoyo para la realización y difusión de tal evento. Nuestra intención es realizar este evento el día 8 de febrero de 2025. Entonces tenemos un horo por determinar en la Biblioteca Pública de Caléxico. Su apoyo y aprobación a las siguientes peticiones van a ser muy agradecidas. Necesitamos una, hacer, necesitamos aprobación para que tengamos facilidades para realizar el evento ahí mismo en la Biblioteca de Caléxico. De ser necesario que nos ayuden en cubrir alguna aseguranza que sea necesaria. La petición de la proclamación del Año Nuevo de la Serpiente de 2005, local tuvimos el honor de recibir hoy mismo, gracias. Apoyo también para la difusión en radio, televisión, y medios sociales. O también con un apoyo para difusión por medio de pósters o publicidad. También necesitamos que nos apoyen con la seguridad pública. La Academia de Artes Marchales de Caléxico ha tomado la bandera de difundir el entendimiento entre las culturas de nuestro valle, tanto en el Valle de Imperial como el Valle de la Ciudad de Mexicali. Como Escuela de Artes Marchales ha sido un elemento el que nosotros tomamos muy en serio y ha sido a través de las artes marciales por las que hemos servido a nuestra comunidad personalmente desde 1980. Estamos ahorita donde estamos ubicados en la calle Cuarte de Beni Imperial, a la orden de todos ustedes. Esta escuela está ubicada desde 1994. Enseñando a muchos estudiantes, a muchos de sus hijos, a algunos de los padres de ustedes estuvieron como parte de mi escuela. Ahora sus nietos son miembros también de mi escuela, lo cual me orgullece enormemente. Como parte de esta diseminación de las culturas, me dio el honor de presentar la danza de león, que es como compartimos entre las culturas orientales y las que residimos aquí en el valle. Se me hizo el honor de abrir públicamente las celebraciones del Año Nuevo Chino de una forma pública, tanto en Mexicali como aquí en el valle. Y eso ha sido un trabajo arduo, muy pesado, y altamente difícil por las reservas que tienen las comunidades chinas de los orientales. Yo soy mitaychino y conozco de primera mano esa reservación que tiene mi gente. Pero aún así, nos hemos hecho ese propósito de seguir propagando el entendimiento entre ambas culturas y todas las culturas que residen aquí en el valle. Es por eso que nuestra intención, nuestra Escuela de Artes Marchales de Caléxico sigue desde entonces, desde 1994 hasta la fecha, apoyando este tipo de eventos. Y quiero agradecer primero y últimamente a todo el Consilio y la ciudad por dar proclamación y la escuela está para apoyarlo. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. With that, we're gonna move to the second presentation. And this is something that, you know, came up last minute, a couple of days ago, we had a meeting with our counterparts from Mexicali. And this was to, this meeting was to talk about the upcoming Serie del Caribe, which is a huge event, a huge opportunity to showcase not just Mexicali, our sister city from Mexicali, but then also Caléxico in our entire region. So, as part of that meeting, in making sure that we're able to really be a good host, as we will have a really sizable amount of individuals coming to participate in that event, so it is really fitting that we have our counterparts from Mexicali come out and do a presentation. So today we have, you know, two members of the Cotuco Mexicali here to share some details about that event, that event that is gonna take place. So, hace un par de días tuvimos una junta con nuestros homólogos de Mexicali, este, para hablar de un evento que va a tomar parte a finales de enero, para ser precisos, enero 31 a febrero 7. Este es un evento que de verdad nos va a dar la oportunidad de tener una gran, este, publicidad, de poder mostrar nuestra región. Tendremos bastantes visitantes, no solamente Mexicali, pero el impacto que puede tener a nivel local, a nivel regional, no solamente de visitantes, pero también un derrame económico. Entonces, este, aunque esta junta tomó parte hace dos días, pero los invitamos a que vinieran a hacer la presentación aquí a este cabildo y también para que puedan, este, quizá hacer más promoción. Ya sabemos de que aquí hay una gran población de seguidores del béisbol y no solamente béisbol, pero, este, de la fiesta, de la fiesta que trae eso y la oportunidad de mostrar quiénes somos. Entonces, sin más, le voy a pasar la palabra a la doctora Paulina Peñas Frías, gerente de Relaciones Públicas Cotuco, y también a la señorita Nadia Ross. Tiene la palabra.
Cori, bien. Hola, buenas tardes. Hola, mucho gusto. Nosotros venimos antes que nada a agradecer al alcalde. Camilo, muchas gracias por esta recepción a todo el Consilio. Es un honor para nosotros estar aquí representando a nuestra alcaldesa, Normalicia Bustamante del 25 Ayuntamiento. Un saludo de ella, por favor, para todos ustedes. Y de parte de nuestra directora general, la maestra María de Los Ángeles Murillo Flores, quien encabeza el Comité de Turismo y Convenciones de Mexicali, pues igualmente un saludo cordial. Y como bien lo comentó el alcalde, Camilo, tuvimos el gusto de tener una reunión binacional para promover esta Serie del Caribe, que es un evento internacional que vamos a recibir en el 31 de enero en Mexicali, en el Nido de las Águilas, y que queremos promocionar esta actividad porque ustedes como hermanos de nosotros de Caléxico, compartir esta frontera es muy importante, que se enteren, que participen, y que sepan que ustedes van a estar bien recibidos y bienvenidos, así como todas las autoridades y también los equipos deportivos de béisbol que se encuentren aquí. Tenemos un pequeño video promocional que nos gustaría compartir de parte de Club Nido de las Águilas, por supuesto, antes de darles más detalles del evento, por favor.
En 2009, Mexicali le demostró al mundo que haciendo ruido se hacía historia. Con un torneo que reunió al mejor béisbol de toda Latinoamérica en el corazón de nuestra ciudad. Quince años después, estamos listos para reencontrarnos con la conquista del Caribe. Listos para recibir a las mejores naciones del rey de los deportes dando paso a nuevos horizontes. Regresa la fiesta más grande a la ciudad que capturó el sol. Bienvenidos a la Serie del Caribe Mexicali 2025. En 2009.
Muchas gracias. Y pues es un pequeño video promocional. A lo mejor algunos de ustedes estuvieron en la primera Serie del Caribe en Mexicali en el 2009. No sé si alguien tuvo la oportunidad de entonces asistir a, tenemos a alguien?
Ya.
Perfecto, muchas gracias, muchas gracias. Y pues es un honor otra vez tener en Mexicali este evento internacional. Las actividades empiezan el 31 de enero hasta el 7 de febrero. Vamos a tener equipos representativos de los países de Puerto Rico, Venezuela, República Dominicana, y Japón, y país invitado especialmente, y por supuesto México también va a tener su representación. Entonces, este evento, bueno, dentro del estadio del Nido de las Águilas, que actualmente está siendo remodelado para este gran evento y magnévento, se va a tener obviamente la venta de los boletos, ya se está dando en el Nido de las Águilas, pero también afuera van a haber actividades culturales y turísticas.
Hola, buenas tardes. Ahora sí que esto es tanto una invitación como una solicitud de apoyo, ya que por la magnitud del evento y las personas que vienen en esta ocasión, pues que se suma a Japón, seguramente ustedes también les va a tocar mucha visita de este lado, tanto por el shopping como la ocupación hotelera, ¿no? En esta ocasión, pues se va a empatar junto con el Año Nuevo Chino también, va a haber actividades a las cuales, por supuesto, que están invitados, culturales. Por ejemplo, el primero de febrero va a haber actividades en la chinesca. Y se espera que en cada día tengamos una agenda cultural, ¿no? Y también de fiesta en el Fan Fest, que va a ser ahí afuera del estadio. Están invitados todos.
Muchas gracias. Y sí, es correcto, el Ayuntamiento, el 25 Ayuntamiento de Mexicali, en coordinación con la Secretaria de Turismo Estatal, obviamente también bajo el mandato de nuestra gobernadora Marina del Pilar, estamos convocados a unir esfuerzos, nosotros como en dependencias municipales y estatales, para apoyar este evento. Y es así que también encarecidamente buscamos el apoyo de nuestras autoridades, Caléxico por ejemplo, para que nos apoyen en la difusión y participen también. Como lo comentó mi compañera, no solamente la fiesta va a estar dentro del estadio, sino fuera del estadio también va a haber una fiesta, el Fan Fest, donde va a haber módulos donde se va a poder exhibir comida, cultura de las cervezas artesanal que tenemos en Mexicali, el Dátil, que también es un producto muy importante de nuestro valle de Mexicali, por ejemplo, pero también las dependencias en torno a las actividades de cultura. Están preparando una agenda cultural muy rica donde también tenemos la invitación de la asociación china a que participe y se promueva el barrio chino. Además de, obviamente, nuestro folklore, música mexicana, artistas especiales invitados afuera del estadio. Y además, afuera del estadio, además vamos a tener en el Centro Cívico, no sé si lo conocen, del Ayuntamiento de Mexicali, van a ver pantallas también para que ellos, pues interesados que no puedan accesar al estadio, ¿verdad? Pero con mucho gusto los esperamos en Cotuco. Nosotros estamos para atender a todos los visitantes y a todos los turistas que quieran hacer alguna actividad en Mexicali, en el Valle de Mexicali. Pero también, por supuesto, si ustedes están interesados en hacer alguna actividad turística en todo Baja California, que tenemos muchos productos turísticos, muchas rutas también nuevas que se están explorando, estamos a sus órdenes. Estamos ubicados en la Glorieta del Caballito. Podemos darles información para atender grupos de forma ejecutiva, atender eventos especiales para grupos de minorías también, por ejemplo. Y cada día la derrama turística pues genera más impacto, no solamente en la frontera norte, sino también en el interior de México y de otros países. Por supuesto, para nosotros sería un honor recibirlos, no solamente en el marco de la Serie del Caribe, sino también a lo largo del año. Estamos por sacar nuestro calendario de actividades, de eventos turísticos 2025. Un ejemplo de eso es que se van a replicar algunos de los eventos que tuvimos en el 2024, donde tenemos actividades de senderismo, tenemos actividades, por supuesto, de la ruta de la cerveza, tenemos actividades en torno a los servicios médicos, que también es amplio los servicios que se ofrecen en Mexicali. Y por supuesto, también tenemos otras actividades deportivas, de casa, de pesca, y bueno, una gran variedad. Están ustedes todos invitados, por favor, no duden en acercarse a nosotros Cotuco para atenderles cordialmente a cada unidad de ustedes, a sus organizaciones. También nos gustó mucho y nos congratula, pues, este evento tan significativo de parte del año que van a celebrar chino aquí el próximo. Con mucho gusto podemos trabajar con ustedes en proyectos binacionales. Muchas gracias al mayor y a las autoridades aquí, también a nuestro consulado de la Secretaria de Relaciones Exteriores en Caléxico. Estamos por coordinar un evento el próximo año en enero, también binacional, y vamos a tener una muestra gastronómica aquí en Caléxico. Nos va a honrar mucho que nos visiten, por supuesto. Y bueno, nada más puntualizando, por favor, la agenda, este, bueno, son imágenes que nos proporcionaron de parte de Cecilia Ochoa, que es la coordinadora general de la Serie del Caribe para el Club Nido de las Águilas. Y bueno, son simplemente alcances, impactos en redes sociales, como Instagram, Facebook, en la televisión de lo que es el béisbol. A lo mejor muchos de ustedes aman el béisbol, a lo mejor muchos de ustedes aman el ambiente alrededor del béisbol, y bueno, a eso los invitamos, ¿verdad? Tengan, tengan por seguro que no solamente esta asistencia física que va a haber, vamos a tener un impacto, ¿verdad?, de gente aquí que va a estar presencialmente, sino también un impacto de forma en línea, y eso es lo que estamos buscando, promover no solamente a Mexicali de forma presencial, sino también a otros alcances, a otras fronteras. Alcalde, por favor, también a su honorable Consilio los estar cordialmente invitados. Y vamos a tener un stand de Cotuco. Si ustedes quieren promover también alguna actividad turística en Caléxico, en el Valle de Imperial, por supuesto, que también nosotros nos podemos coordinar con ustedes. Muchísimas gracias por el espacio y vamos a estar al final, pues si alguno quiere alguna información más detallada, con mucho gusto estamos a sus órdenes. Thank you very much.
Gracias, muchas gracias por... Así que sí, ya como se puede dar, ya empezó el ambiente aquí, ¿verdad? Entonces, este, vamos a tener que ir a bailar salsa, no la salsa que conocemos, ¿verdad? Pero la salsa de Puerto Rico, el merengue de República Dominicana, y el sake de Japón. So, a tomar. Entonces, gracias por estar con nosotros hoy. El béisbol es de lo hago también, lo más importante. Gracias. So, now we continue with public comments and public appearances. This is not to exceed three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the city council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commenters may be requested to limit their group comments to fifteen minutes. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to that item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any public comments?
Augusto Valenzuela.
Mi visita con ustedes hoy este día es darles las gracias por haber terminado la limpia del corredor que tenemos a un costado del parque nosotros, les damos las gracias a todas las personas que utilizamos ese corredor pero ¿por qué no quitar los árboles secos que están ahí?, ¿para qué los quieren?, se quedaron ahí, hay que quitarlos, los árboles se secaron por falta de agua. Y la gracia pues mira muy bonito ojalá tengan un momento y vayan a observar, en realidad la selva que había se acabó, es una cosa que puede ver a una distancia a todos quién viene, quién va, quedó muy bien, les damos las gracias pero hay muchas cosas, ahí todavía falta el agua, ¿por qué se están secando los árboles?, las luces de las que hay pues funcionan siete, ocho nada más. Pues eso es todo lo que vengo a decirle yo, gracias por fin haber terminado eso.
Alejandro Guerrero.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alejandra Guerrero vivo en la calle Clinton aquí en Caléxico, este primero que nada quiero agradecer que se haya tomado en cuenta en la agenda me parece que de los topes que estén alrededor del parque Córdoba este nada más que tenemos una inquietud mi comunidad quisiera un tope en la calle Clinton que es cuando donde está mi calle porque los vecinos tenemos varios vecinos que tienen niños con autismo entonces este ellos son los más interesados en que se tome en cuenta que se ponga un tope por esa calle que no está exactamente alrededor del parque sino que hacia hacia la calle, ¿cómo se llama esta?, la CO, otra cosa que me tiene preocupante que yo voy al parque y camino y no nomás este soy yo sino son más personas y por lo general son personas adultas que van en la mañana, hay una fuga de agua en el área eléctrica de hecho está un sansa ahí donde dice cuidado no se acerque y lo mencioné la vez pasada también tenemos solamente dos botes de basura, las bolsas también que se le ponen a los perritos tampoco son despachadas solamente se pone la bolsa donde está la donde ponen el contenedor de las heces de los perritos las de las personas pero no ponen bolsitas. Los niños que ahí van por lo general están ahí en las canchas de béisbol y muchas veces no las podemos ocupar porque están las demás personas utilizándolas entonces quisiera pues que hubiera un espacio para esos niños que no están en una liga que no participan solamente quieren jugar con su hijo. También observo que los juegos están vandalizados, están rayados, la tirolesa no funciona, las sillas voladoras tampoco está la base, las sillas giratorias están quemadas, hay un instrumento musical que tampoco tiene para tocar, otra de las cosas que miré pues son grafitis con groserías, con señas, ocenas, con pues miembros que rayan los adolescentes, la carpeta está totalmente destrozada y ahí va mucha gente ahora que tenemos los apartamentos haledaños pues el parque ha tenido más uso que me imagino pues que es normal ahora que van a estar este más personas con las canchas de béisbol tengo entendido que pues ahí van a estar y tengo entendido que se va a inaugurar también. No sé exactamente cuándo se va a inaugurar me imagino que en este en estos días pero ¿qué es lo que van a inaugurar?, me preguntó yo. El zacate está totalmente seco, los árboles no se han regado más de varios meses porque no se han regado entonces nosotros necesitamos una cancha de básquetbol nos gustaría que se tomara en cuenta el plan que tenían hace veinte años que nosotros estamos pagando un impuesto para que ese parque sea para nosotros por los que estamos alrededor no un parque comunitario. La verdad me molestaría que me siguieran cobrando un impuesto donde yo pago mi impuesto y es comunitario, ¿me explico? Entonces todas esas son las cuestiones que mi comunidad está inquietante y varias personas me dicen Alejandra venimos te apoyamos le dije mira me gustaría arreglarlo de forma interna no me gustaría que todos pues estuviéramos aquí le digo pero yo sé que algunos pues me están escuchando me están viendo y pues nada vengo a hablar nada más en representación de mi comunidad y espero que se me atienda y sí agradezco que se haya tomado en cuenta los topes gracias.
Astrid Cárdenas.
Buenas noches mi nombre es Astrid Calderas y vengo aquí en apoyo a mi comunidad de Víctoras Villas, en la reunión anterior mencionaron pues nuestros vecinos sobre el interés que tenemos de que se incluyan en los planes las canchas de básquetbol yo en lo personal tengo hijos de edad media y tengo hijos adolescentes y adultos jóvenes quienes cuando regresan a casa por ciertos periodos relativamente no hay nada en Caléxico para ellos y desde que bueno pues desde que se construyeron estas casas se nos había comentado que iba a estar las canchas de básquetbol y yo vengo a pedirlo que lo consideren en los planes también me gustaría mencionar que dentro de estos planes de la ciudad de Caléxico sí saben que es una de las ciudades más contaminadas de toda la nación así es que una un complejo como el que tiene el centro que sea indoor building para los jóvenes porque en ocasiones están haciendo ejercicios y exponiéndose severamente a los niveles de contaminación tan altos, acuerden de que precisamente este parque está entre la CO y la Hybrin Airy y pueden estar contando la cantidad de talles que pasan por ahí no solamente emite el tiso pero otros contaminantes que son monucivos para nuestros jóvenes niños y los adultos que van y caminan hacen ejercicio en el parque y también vengo a hacer eco a una petición de hace catorce años del señor Arturo Medina de colocar un alto a la esquina de Meros y Nixon porque si ustedes observan o pasan por este vecindario cuando las personas vienen del parque de la Clinton y Meros hacen su alto y aceleran como si estuvieran jugando carreras y pues nuestro arque está aquí en esta esquina está muy expuesto a que ocurra un accidente y no me gustaría estar aquí el día en que ocurra un accidente pidiéndoles que tomen una acción porque ustedes están aquí para la comunidad y saben que lo mejor nosotros vivimos ahí lo experimentamos venimos aquí y les hacemos las observaciones basado en nuestras experiencias tiene catorce años requiriendo Mister Medina este alto nadie de ustedes responde no se toman el tiempo de ir y observar por qué razón se ha estado requiriendo este alto y sí me gustaría que no lo ignoren como concejales anteriores y que se le dé seguimiento a este y vuelvo a repetir que se consideran las canchas de básquetbol y un complejo que se merece nuestra comunidad que estén protegidos de tanta contaminación que hay aquí es todo gracias.
Mónica Valdivia.
Buenas noches mi nombre es Mónica Valdivia también vengo en apoyo a mi comunidad en Victoria Villas y tres de los puntos más importantes para mí uno son los topes, en mi casa ya tuve un incidente yo vivo ahí desde el 2004 fue una de las primeras residentes de ahí de hecho mi casa era la única lo demás era pura tierra este yo ya tuve un incidente donde un muchachito de catorce años se rojo el carro de la abuela y se metió a mi driveway y por obra del espíritu santo porque tengo un árbol no se metió a mi casa. Mis hijos eran chicos gracias a ellos no estaban porque si no esto hubiera sido peor entonces los topes creo que son algo súper necesarios yo vivo en Clinton y calle Meros contra esquina del parque este ese es uno muy importante como le digo porque yo ya tuve un incidente en carne propia y pues no le deseo a nadie que lo hubiera vivido. Lo otro es que como siendo como les digo residente de las Pioneras a esas canchas o lo que es de lo de béisbol jamás estuvieron consideradas he peleado he dicho he mandado cartas a todos los concejales los planos iniciales no eran eso el parque tengo fotos las lo que es el área de juegos no se construyó o se puso hasta el 2012 siendo que a nosotros nos cobraron impuestos desde que nos cobraron las casas, a mí en lo personal yo recuerdo perfectamente fueron más de seis mil dólares donde nos prometieron un parque con canchas de básquetbol asadores bancas para que se sentaran baños no un béisbol porque hay tantos lugares con ligas de béisbol porque tienen que ir a quitarnos lo que nosotros pagamos con nuestros impuestos como dijo la compañera ese es otro punto muy importante y lo otro referente al parque o sea nada menos el sábado pasado llegué yo una fiesta en la noche con mi marido eran las once y media de la noche venían tres niños y estaban robando o intentando robar la casa del vecino los correteamos obviamente que eran cuatro corrieron para todos lados no hay policías he encontrado condones jeringas cuando llevo a mis nietos a caminar al parque. Yo soy voy y doy rondas porque ya también me han hueveado los carros me quebraron un vidrio con una piedra, las patrullas las veo escondidas en donde no se hizo el fraccionamiento por la calle de Clinton allá se esconden amultar a la gente que se pasa el alto pero no son capaces de darse una vuelta por el parque a las once o diez y media de la noche que las luces ya están apagadas está lleno de carros y de muchachos, ¿qué hacen ahí? No sé, no sé si también hay adultos porque como les digo he encontrado condones, condones, jeringas y mil cosas más, voy en la mañana a las ocho nueve con mis nietos y tengo que ver ese espectáculo no entonces sí les agradecería enormemente que pongan atención a estos puntos que no son nuevos como le digo soy residente desde 2004 y desde el 2004 se habían ido peleando todos esos puntos y nadie nadie nos presta atención gracias.
The city clerk also received a comment via email from Andres Hernandez, Ms. Maricela can read it.
Thank you. Before I discuss in length this speech and comment are not to devalue or upset the current power struggle happening between dynasties of our corrupt political establishments. A hereby recognize the strength and power that Border Patrol, the Firefighter and Police Officers Association carry in administering quick and decisive action to saving the lives of citizens. Their efforts to the people are greater and more noticeable than any individual action council members take to promote themselves as bastions of morality and unity. I am here to provide an update to the current establishment of Caléxico and extend it to all people of Imperial County. This land is nothing more than pain and suffering to the youth. There are no jobs for the youth or even the middle-aged adults with years of job experience above us to sustain themselves in this county. I advise and beg of everyone struggling in this city and the wider Imperial County to leave this county to die. They do not care about us, politicians only love our taxes and campaign donations. It has been targeted by special interest groups from farmers to local politicians, BlackRock and even the state government who wish to make it harder for normal folk to live amongst the ranch. There is no middle class for me to escape, only poverty and the streets where I battle junkies, illegal immigrants, drug peddlers and human traffickers who utilize the weak political establishments of Caléxico and Imperial County that run rampant throughout downtown Caléxico, especially between the hours of nine PM to four AM. In my twenty-five years living in Caléxico I have been only disappointed with each passing election and the alliances formed to destabilize any meaningful change to Caléxico residents. As a citizen of Caléxico and an American, I will not be part of this disgusting local regime or allow myself any more wasted time to fail to advocate for a better political establishment. I do not serve you and will never serve you. I will always look to myself and my family for guidance, just as the council people serve its people to enrich their own followers. Should the POA request further comment then such a statement will be in support of refunding and performing police standards in line with the rise in crime statistics all across the US. We need more protection for the average citizens, not just for the council before me. I will never serve Caléxico or its political establishment. I would rather die for my country than deal with you people. I request for federal investigations into every sector of Imperial County politics and for the annexation of Caléxico by the federal government to provide greater federal role in line with military and Border Patrol operations. Caléxico can no longer operate successfully without input from state and federal mandates. It will only be a matter of time before your empire is consumed by President Donald Trump, the only salvation we have under God and Jesus Christ Himself. God is great, Jesus Christ is my one and only King. I will be a slave to no one. I wish you the best but I know you wouldn't wish me the same. Again, thank you to the men and women of CPD, Caléxico Fire Stations and Border Patrol who do their best to protect the people. You are my heroes. Everyone else on this council has no legacy to stand or nor would they care to sacrifice themselves to advocate for US private citizen. I am free from the enslavement of this council, are you?
No more public comments.
Thank you. So with that we move to city manager's report.
It's on consent agenda, your comment it's.
We also mark the X for public comments.
Mister Victor Rocha, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My name is Victor Rocha, I live here in Caléxico almost my entire life and the first thing I wanted to do is thank you guys for serving and for having the courage to do so. You had your ups and downs but still it takes a lot of courage to do it. One thing I want to talk to you is today is about the eight point five million dollars. It's been four years and it's just sitting there, it was supposed to be for our kids. You're just using it to bankroll your raises. We need to stop this. If you're applying for a grant and you want something done then get it done. You've received the money or actually you're supposed to submit your expenses in order for you to get refunded. When are we going to start the Hoover Party? When are we going to complete it? It's been four years, none of you have made an effort to go and request a modification of our application in order for us to use that whatever funds they allow us to do it. Otherwise we're going to lose that money. Our kids need it, our community needs it and just sitting on it for years. That's why I told you I commend you for your efforts but it all depends on the staff you have, it's a reflection of you. The consequences of your inactions is what you have now, a totally chaos. The other thing I want to address, you allocated half a million dollars to the nosotros part. It's just sitting there. What are we waiting for the federal government say give us our money back? It's money that you said you were going to do something, let's do it. One of your contracts has been modified by six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars tonight, so how can there be the lowest bidder? How can that be possible? You're just getting him another an amendment for six half over half a million dollars, so how can that person or that company be your lowest bidder? Shame, shame on you. You're allowing for your administrator to bring it before you, no justification whatsoever, no reason behind the modification and you're just allowing it. You're going to take action on hiring people when we're going to have a brand new city council members here soon. Wait for them to generate their team. Do us do us a favor as a community, let the newcomers, we spoke, we elected someone else, let them do their work. Don't ruin their way of thinking. Lastly, this gentleman complained about the nosotros part, that's we have half a million dollars, trees are dying. That's, we have half a million dollars, trees are dying, no one's taking care of it, no maintenance. Braffiti all over the place. Playground is in horrible, horrible condition. Someone is going to get injured, some of our kids are going to get injured. What are we waiting for? For something to happen? And then, oh, we're sorry, we could have done better. Again, thank you for your service.
Julio Rocha.
Julio Rocha, seven eighty-five A M V Teo Mel Avenue, Callexico. Buenas tardes, público y miembros del concilio. Mi razón por venir hoy es también acerca del artículo número ocho y nueve. Si, mi recomendación es de que votaran para postponerlo. Ahorita no hay, no hay dinero para, para hacer hire a personal. Los sentimos mucho, pero vamos a darle la responsabilidad al concilio nuevo. Que vean ellos el budget, cuánto dinero hay para poder atraer más gente, hacer hire más, más gente que sí se ocupa bastante. Pero ahorita no quiero que no, no la ocasión para hacerlo. Gracias.
Yolanda Cunningham.
Buenas noches a todos y cada uno de ustedes. Buenas noches a las personas que nos acompañan. Mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham y soy residente aquí de la ciudad de Callexico. Y la razón por la que estoy aquí también es como mis vecinas, mis vecinas de muchos años estamos sumamente preocupados por el Parque Córdoba, como se lo hemos expresado a nuestro concejal. Una de las principales cosas que me tiene preocupada y molesta es que al igual que lo que dijo la señora, en el dos mil cinco yo compré esa propiedad y no habiendo nada en ese terreno yo ya estaba pagando un, un impuesto que se llama Melo Rus. Yo estaba pagando por tierra y por nada. Hasta el dos mil doce se construyó el pequeño playground que pusieron allí, que era un cochinero lleno de arena, la verdad. Este hasta el dos mil dieciocho se consiguió algo porque gracias a una empleada muy eficiente de la ciudad, por cierto, se pudo conseguir un grant para poder aportar ese parque. Y yo lo que le he comentado a la señora Falomir que aquí está presente es preguntarle que, o al city council, si nos pudiera decir a los residentes de esa zona, dónde está el dinero que hemos pagado por tantos años de impuestos. A nosotros cuando pagamos un, un impuesto, se supone que las personas que vivimos en esa propiedad debemos de tener mejores instalaciones, mantenimiento, es un cochinero. Es un cochinero lo que tienen, no, no, no limpian todo, es asqueroso lo que tienen allí, es vergonzoso. Y otra de las cosas que tengo que decir aquí es, quién a ustedes, si se lo dijo la señora Falomir, quién de ustedes notificó o qué concilio notificó, qué city manager notificó a los ciudadanos de esa área que iban a poner tres canchas de béisbol. Ese parque es común, no es comunitario como el Melo ha dicho la señora Falomir, no es de la ciudad. El terreno se le donó a la ciudad. Pero ese parque nosotros, los ciudadanos de esa, de esa zona, lo estamos manteniendo. Y no es justo que ustedes, que el concilio que haya sido, a mí no me interesa, hayan llegado a ponernos tres canchas de béisbol que parecen jaulas. Ustedes saben lo que nos están trayendo allí, problemas. De por sí ya tenemos problemas de velocidad donde la gente no respeta. Váyanse, el día de ayer hubo juego. Amanece un cochinero en la mañana porque nomás tenemos dos botes de basura, señora Falomir, en el parque. Porque los otros, los que eran buenos se los llevaron, perdón. No, 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 pues perdón, discúlpeme, pues es tanta mi frustración. ¿Cómo le vamos a hacer señor mayor? ¿Cómo le vamos a hacer señores del concilio? Nosotros los residentes, no se nos notificó que iban a ponernos, que nos iban a llevar las ligas de béisbol. Tienen el parque que no lo han cancelado en el, en el, en el César Chávez Boulevard, allí sigue estando el parque. No queremos tres canchas de béisbol los residentes. Queremos cosas para nuestros niños que residen en esa área porque nosotros estamos pagando. Y si ustedes, como me le dije la señora Falomir, ustedes no quieren que nosotros les estemos exigiendo, entonces ustedes nos tienen que hacer retroactivo todo el dinero que hemos pagado de ese impuesto. Nosotros queremos ese dinero de regreso. ¿Por qué? Porque ustedes no nos están respetando a las, a las personas que vivimos ahí. Vayan, vayan a ver ese parque, vayan cómo, cómo, cómo viven las personas, están pegadas. Y todavía piensan hacer un parking allí, piensan meter a la, una cancha de soccer para las ligas de soccer, está bien. Todos queremos deporte, pero mi hija no juega eso. Las hijas de mis amistades andan jugando en la calle básquetbol. Hay otros niños que me han dicho, adolescentes se han acercado, queremos jugar tenis. Vamos al, al distrito escolar, nos cierran las puertas en la cara porque no quieren que entremos al distrito escolar cuando también pagamos una cantidad de, yo pago trescientos cincuenta dólares. Y estoy segura en esa zona muchísimas familias también pagan y no nos prestan las instalaciones. Entonces, por favor, ¿qué van a inaugurar en ese parque? Entonces nosotros vamos a buscar la manera de hacer un referendum para que nos quiten esos impuestos y no lo hagan retroactivo a nosotros. Porque no tenemos nada de lo que nosotros queremos. Necesitamos buscar un balance allí. Los tienen invadidos, nos llevaron un montón de ligas, ahora de la Liga de Soccer, la Liga de Béisbol y nuestros niños están jugando en la calle exponiéndose que los atropellen. Por favor, les pido que lo reconsideren, que entiendan, yo ya invertí en esa propiedad como todas las personas que vivimos allí. Son nuestras casas, nosotros vivimos a diario allí, caminamos en ese parque. Pues nada más les pido, y si van a poner los topes, nos pongan fechas para poner topes. No queremos que nos estén diciendo, los vamos a poner, los vamos a poner, ya los necesitamos.
Good evening, council, mayor, mayor pro tem, members of the community. First and foremost, again, starting off every staff report with, thank you to city staff for the hard work, to law enforcement, public works, parks and recs, library, all of them that, you know, continue to show up and, and do what they can with what they have. Starting off, thank the community for their concerns and comments. I do take my notes. You understand there's some frustration when we do give a public comment, but please keep it in a cordial, respectful manner. The name-calling isn't doing us any better as a city and as a community as a whole and as a dius up here in the top. So, thank you for your comment, but again, in a respectful manner. We did put a flyer out for fire station number two, having a open house on Friday the sixth, and it is an open event to the whole community. I recommend everybody that is available to go show up and see where these monies have been going for the past couple of months, right? The guys' heart have been there. Again, the call volume has increased on that side. But they're thankful for what they have and they're thankful for being back at, on the west side of town. I have had talks regarding the sidewalks, ADUs throughout the city. I'll continue to have those talks when the following need. I want to thank Mister Legaspi for inviting me to the airport and Mister Jerry Aruez to giving us a tour of the facility and just bringing us more information that we need so we can share to the public when we give a, an operational thing of how the airport is functioning and all that, that was requested a couple of weeks ago. The Heber Park update, we are continuing to work with the Heber Park. Miss Falomir has continued to work with the architectures to get the scope of work to the size that we need. So, like Mister Rocha was mentioning, get this thing off the ground. It's been a long time in the making, but it is moving forward. The speed bumps, we do have an informational item at the end of the agenda that we can inform the public on where we're at. That was provided by Miss Falomir. We'll share some more insight on that. I would like to welcome and I would like to thank them. This process has been a few months in the making and I know the concerns of hiring two positions with new council coming into play or whatnot. But these are vital positions that the city has needed for a long time. One position has not had any applications for quite a bit and the other one, just recently, we, we did get some few applications and with the recommendation from community leaders throughout the county, recommended for both of these individuals to be hired and to be part of the Callexico team. I would like to thank Ms. Carla Chaparro that's in attendance here for her presence and, and for picking Callexico, right, to come here and work knowing that there is a lot of work that needs to be done. There are a lot of requests from, you know, not only the, the new five that are going to be up here, but the remaining two, Mister Legaspi and Ms. Talinda that unfortunately has fallen sick. There is going to be a lot of work getting done, right? You, you will be asked a lot to do with the personnel you have. I would like to thank Mister Michael Coine. He is a Callexico native. He, he was born and raised, I believe, here. He went to school in Callexico High. He's a bulldog and he went off to other areas of the county to work in Els, Imperial County, Alcentro, and has been in the city of Santee for quite some bit. Actually, meeting with Mister Coine earlier today, he's been doing his homework. And he knows what he's coming into and we didn't want to scare him off of all the work that he's going to be asked upon, right? But he knew the ends of now of not being compliant with certain areas. We need to meet our housing element. There's funds available. He had all these great ideas. I wish members of the council would have been there to, to hear him or Mister Legaspi to sit on that. But I had the pleasure of having Ms. Falomir sit there and, and it was pretty good to hear. But again, like I mentioned, these two are highly recommended through community leaders, not only here, but throughout the county to move, move forward with them. And I do thank them for being in attendance. And I think working on stop signs, seeing Perry, just all my quick notes here. There is also an informational item for, for Scaroni Road as well. I want to thank the volunteer groups. I know they're one of the concerns with, you had a fireman workout at nosotros park, right? And the lights didn't turn on and it's hit or miss, it's either you're in the dark or you're in the light. So I did have a conversation with Ms. Falomir. We did have a conversation with Ms. Uraina and a couple of members of the community regarding Rodriguez Field, nosotros park and other facilities that do need super attention right away. But I do want to thank the, the volunteer groups that are out there spray painting the graffiti. Unfortunately, they're back within, you know, a day. Mister Jesse Garcia has been out there, been advocating, posting videos. But they're out there doing work and it's unfortunate that these kids go back out and vandalize these areas. I'll get with Mister Chief Orozco to see what we can do to kind of combat that. They've already reached out to the probation office and they do have a graffiti abatement team. And we're taking pictures to get all these, you know, maybe put the picture to what their file is and, and reach out to these families about their individuals or whatnot, but we are working on it. I think that's it. The fire station, December sixth, yes. Yeah. Yeah, so December sixth, again, fire station number two. I welcome the whole community. It's a community public event to go check out the fire station.
Thank you. Now with that, any comments from the council, questions for the city manager?
I apologize for not attending that meeting. I forgot.
But just, just comments for the, questions for the city manager, not yet on the council comments yet. Okay, so no questions or comments. Anyway, so, so now we go to commissioners' report. If I have any commissioners?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council, city manager and members of the public. Just wanted to let you know that, first of all, we also want to thank on behalf of the commission, we want to thank the recreation department and the parks department for the work that they've been doing with all the requests that have been coming through the council meetings. So thank you, Lili, for working on the cost estimates for fencing and listening to our concerns as well. Just wanted to briefly let you know that we did have a ad hoc committee with the Park Recreation, Beautification and Volunteer Services Committee at the public library last night. And then this morning, we had the privilege of meeting with the city manager, council member Legaspi, board supervisor Escobar and Jesús Solano, our commissioner, and other members of the community to discuss a park project that we want to complete. Ms. Falomir has been working with the Carpenters Union, the six one nine from San Diego, and we finally met with them today to discuss how we can move forward with that snack bar restroom facility. So I want to say that Friday, we're going to get the container in so that we can start putting everything inside the container. And as soon as we get that container in, the Carpenters Union will come in and demolish the roofing of that snack bar so we can start moving forward to hopefully clean it up and get it done before the end of this year. So that will be the replacement of the roofing, the interior of the snack bar, all the restroom facilities, the stalls are going to be all redone as well as the partitions. So we went and measured the cinder block. It's about a twenty by forty-five piece of block that has women's and men's restroom. A lot of work needs to be done. So once that project is done, we have completed one park project on a park. So that's, we're piecing everything out. In regards to all the other issues that have been addressed here regarding Córdoba and, and Heber, Ms. Falomir is doing the best she can with the staffing that she has to get those numbers out. And we are still meeting with the state of California. As I mentioned at the last meeting, that was a competitive grant and again, we can't change the integrity of the grant because it was very competitive though the state of California. But they are willing to come and meet with us and we're hoping that will also happen before the end of this year. With that, I look forward to working with the Callexico Volunteers Group Alliance to start moving forward to get that park project done. That way you can also cut the ribbon there as well. So if you have any questions, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. How you guys doing? Just wanted to do a little bit of quick update of what we're working on right now. I'd like to thank Orozco. We're starting to get moved on the parking meters and different things that we, we want to add as well, maybe in the future. But right now, we're looking at a base level of cost and then fluctuating during certain days and then weekends and stuff like that. That way we can bring in some recommendations for you guys to vote on soon, hopefully, get that done before June first, right? I'd like to also welcome the new, to the team, Carla Chaparro and Michael Coane, right? Sometimes we wear our hearts on our sleeve, right? You guys probably seen a lot of people today talking, you know, the way they talk, but this is because we care about Callexico, right? We only want the best for, for our city. And I know we have the potential, we have the people here that want to work, that want to be part of government, right? Like me, I never was part of it, but this whole year it just changed my way of thinking and, you know, I just joined the commission, you know? So unfortunately, this is going to be probably one of our last ones, right? Because there's a whole new slate of council and with that, all commissioners are gone. So once the certification of the election is done, then people can put in their, their, their applications. I'd love to see a couple of people here put in their applications for different commissioners, commissions and help progress this, the city forward, right? But I think that, that will be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? So with, with that, we move to city council comments and reports of minutes attended. Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, mayor. So Mister Lee, I've known you for, Master Lee, I know you for a long time. And so congratulations on your proclamation. Would like to see maybe in the near future, we can dedicate maybe a special day for you in anticipation for that, maybe at the beginning of the year. Kind of run up the, the citizens of Callexico and plan for that festivity probably around whenever it's celebrated. I know the Chinese year is going to be celebrated in January twenty-five, twenty thousand and twenty-five. I know the Chinese Year is gonna be celebrated in January 25, 2025, but anticipated that maybe the city of Callexico can do something for your population. And this year, as you know, it's a snake year. So it celebrates wisdom, elegance, and transformation. And so what it does, it... People like you who've been part of this community, and I know you for a very, very long time, is that you have done exactly what that is and you represent the city well in that. Obviously, on professional growth, I saw you when you first met you, your family, I saw you when you first on Fifth and Imperial, and you've been there since. Yeah, so it just fits you well that we're celebrating the snake year for you and congratulations on that, Mr. Lee. And hope you, in the near future, we can do more business with your organization, okay? The other thing is, there's... I received a lot of calls since the last time I was here. And it's always the same, same things of all the concern. We already talked about it and there were some public comments, concerns. But I could tell people, my election is over. My duty is over. In a couple of weeks, we're gonna have a new city council. And I would tell them is that reserve those comments or whatever you have is bringing up to the city council. I personally, we're gonna... I'm gonna wanna, I want to work with the new city council and where it comes up with the new administration. And everybody comes in, congratulations on your appointment, and congratulations on your appointment, those are the two positions that we needed a long time. So I'll always tell them, you know, work with the new city council. They're from Callexico. They have new leadership, new visions, new things to bring to the table. My job is done in a couple of weeks. And I will reserve for that day so I can make my little comments on that. But that's all I got to say for tonight. Thank you.
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, the city manager and I attended the... We had the privilege and honor to tour the Callexico International Airport with Mr. Jerry. And there is a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed there that we have discovered. There's a lot of prices that need to be augmented because it's, those prices has been around for since the 80s. So a lot of things that needs to be changed. And I invite the audience to stop by the airport and visit and see what Jerry has out there. Also, I attended the community, a meeting with the community service commissioners this morning. And it was a very, it was a good meeting. We talked about Rodriguez Park and the future of it. And we're gonna continue meeting on a weekly or on a bi-weekly base in order to make something happen at Rodriguez Park. And we're gonna work on other parks also. Okay, so thank you, commissioners, for attending, for all of us being there and giving in our inputs. That's about it. Thank you, the new hirees that are about to come in. Very, very needed, especially our planning department. In order for us to go forward with a lot of businesses out there, we need a planning director. And that's gonna save us a lot of money, also with our finance director. So thank you, guys, for joining the team.
Thank you. Thank you. So just a couple of reminders. Thursday night to Friday morning, reminder, Farm Workers Appreciation Breakfast. Why is that important? It's because, again, you know, we'll be hosting the 45th annual Farm Workers Breakfast. So about 3,000 to 5,000 individuals go through, you know, here that one stop. Also, we have a chance to host people that come from different parts of the state to visit us also and to be part of that event. So I think if you have a chance to stop by, that would be great. And again, I just want to thank, you know, our visitors from Mexicali. Also, thank you for coming today and presenting about that great event. And I know that, you know, even though we, some of us are leaving, but I think, you know, for the ones that stay, I think that's an opportunity that we need to continue to collaborate, you know, not just on this type of events. But I always have said that, you know, we need to take it, we need to take this relationship of sister cities more than just, you know, doing the ceremonial visits, but rather sharing events, sharing some of our common, you know, bonds that we have. You know, we talk about the Chinese New Year every time, since last year and now this year again. So and I know in my couple of visits that I've done to the city of Mexicali, I've met with a few people that are interested in holding joint cultural events, you know, that I think it's part of, not just our, you know, collaboration, but also an opportunity to showcase our community, to bring, you know, activities to this community. So thank you for that. Let's get ready to participate. On another note, also, I want to make this announcement out of the council members discretionary fund. I would like to make the following donations. $100 for the kits and badges. That is coming up. So $100 also for the friends of the library. So they can keep on holding their, you know, book clubs, you know, events. And then my last donation will be $300 for the fire department, Fire Station Number 2, to be specific, so they can buy some of the kitchenware that they need. So they need to replace some of the pots and pans that they're really old. So $300 for them, chief. So $100 for kits and badges, $100 for friends of the library, and $300 for Fire Station 2 to buy kitchenware. So with that, you know, we move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered a routine by the city council, Callexico Community Development Agency, accessory agency, or Callexico Financial Authority, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item might be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the city council. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to accept the calendar or to pull any items?
We have comments on consent. Victor Rocha?
I'm just gonna have to reiterate how important it is for the new council members, which includes the two of you that are gonna be remaining here, to have their team make sure that all the checks and balances have been cleared on these two potential candidates. I think they're great candidates. I have nothing against them on a personal basis. And one of them, it's a great surprise, it's from Callexico. But I think it should be prudent of you to allow for the next council members to make that selection. They are the ones that need to assure themselves that the money is there to pay them and not put them in jeopardy because you're gonna offer them. And then later on, you're gonna find out, you don't have the funds, like you did on the parade, and you had $900,000 surplus. So no one knows here exactly how much money you have. So take all the precautionary, because you're offering them something for three years. And why are you making contracts for three years? Make them from one year. If they pass, renew. Give them the option to renew. On a year-to-year basis, if you're gonna issue contracts. Because you're also, they're also giving up their positions wherever they're at. And I think it's not right for you just to make, just because the acting city manager makes that recommendation. It doesn't say that they went through all the process in his memo. It doesn't say that they were interviewed by a panel. It doesn't address how they score them. I think you need to know all of that. Just a pure memo from an acting city manager, it's not justification for you to hire someone at the end of your terms. Please allow for new council members to take their seat and let them decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julio Rocha? Yolanda Cunningham?
Buenas noches de nuevo. Ya dije mis datos. Yo, al igual que el señor Rocha y varias personas de la comunidad, estamos sumamente preocupados. No entendemos por qué después de tanto tiempo tienen la necesidad... Yo entiendo que hay necesidades en la ciudad, pero deberían de esperarse también. Yo pienso que al igual ustedes pues ya van a terminar y creo que inclusive para ustedes mismos. Lo que pasa aquí es que entra una nueva persona y yo al igual pienso que quizás estas personas están calificadas, sumamente calificadas. Pero algo que me queda a mí muy, para mí es muy preocupante es... Yo estuve hablando, yo estuve preguntando, inclusive para la posición de city manager. Yo estuve preguntando cuántas personas aplicaron para la posición de la señorita Carla y nadie me dice nada. Solamente una de las señoritas de, que maneja el personal, me dijo que había tres aplicaciones para city manager de la señorita de finanzas. No me supo decir cuánta gente aplicaron. Pero yo como ciudadana y creo que cualquier persona tenemos derecho a saber claridad en el procedimiento. Aquí no hay claridad, porque aquí no se nos está, no se nos dice. Yo pregunto, ¿cuánta gente aplicó? No me saben decir. ¿Quiénes aplicaron? Me dicen que eso es privado. Si una persona viene y aplica a la ciudad, pues es un servidor público. Y yo como ciudadana tengo derecho a saber. No quiero saber su vida personal, pero tengo derecho a saber cuántas personas están aplicando. Tengo derecho a saber cuál es el background de esta persona. Tengo derecho a saber cuáles son las calificaciones de esa persona. Tengo derecho a saber también quién la recomendó a esa persona. Y resulta que aquí no pueden decir absolutamente nada. Yo estoy pagando mis impuestos y yo como ciudadana y como cualquier persona que está aquí que paga impuestos, tenemos derecho a saber ese procedimiento. Necesitamos claridad y saben que de alguna manera ustedes están enviándonos el mensaje erróneo. Ya sé que tenemos necesidad de estas personas, pero hagámoslo fácil. Simple y sencillamente provean a la comunidad. Díganles cuando van a llegar, van a llenar una posición. Estamos cansados de nepotismo. Callexico tiene una, es famosa. Y lo sé por gente que vive fuera y me dicen Callexico. Y me da mucha pena que me digan, pero yo lo compruebo. Lo compruebo al estar preguntando, ¿quién lo recomendó? Empleados de la ciudad. Eso no está bien. Eso se llama nepotismo, eso es ilegal. Deberíamos de ser claros. Y eso no tiene nada que ver si la persona está calificada o no. Aquí, un servidor público tiene que tener un buen estatus. Nadie somos perfectos, pero cuando uno es servidor público, uno tiene que tener claridad en su persona, en su moral, y tiene que tener claridad las autoridades para decirle a sus ciudadanos quiénes están aplicando.
Diana Nuricumbo?
Good evening, Diana Nuricumbo, 1068 Villa Barranca. So I just want to say that there's an issue, I believe, with accountability, being that the majority of the council is getting ready to change. Obviously, a majority is important because, you know, the vote of the majority is what passes. So in this situation, I mean, it's nothing against the candidates. I did a little bit of my own research on them. They look like they're very qualified. The only problem I have here is that the amount of the agreement, the time of the agreement, two years and three years for somebody that's not for positions that aren't even being selected by the city manager as municipal code states, as ordinance states. So we're gonna, so who's gonna be accountable if it doesn't work out? Because the acting city manager that's here now, he's not gonna be here. Three of the council members that are here now, they're not gonna be here. We don't have a city manager. So these positions here, if they don't work out, we're stuck with them for two to three years. And I understand that we need them and that's the only reason why. I mean, I support the fact that we need them and the fact that they are probably very qualified. I just don't think that we, that the agreement should be for so long. If you guys are going to approve this agreement, I think that both them should take the risk of having it for one year, just like we're taking a risk. The new council that's coming in is taking a risk with them without even having them being hired by a city manager that we feel is good to hire these positions. Because whenever the new council is tasked with hiring the city manager, which I believe we can all agree is something we're gonna do immediately as we come in, the city manager is the one that's supposed to build their team. So we're not giving them that opportunity now. So I think if you're gonna proceed with this and if it's allowable, you should change the agreement for a year. And I think that's fair, since nobody here is gonna be accountable for those positions. Thank you.
Letizia Cota?
Martha Letizia Aldana Cota, resident of Callexico most of my life, 417 Rosemont. And you're not, you guys are not gonna believe this, but I didn't speak to any of these people that just spoke, but I also have an issue with what we have. And nothing against the two individuals that you're looking to hire, but he's an interim. He's gonna be out of there shortly. The three of you are gonna be gone by next two weeks. And it is the city manager's job, the city manager, the permanent city manager, to select their team. Because it's with him or her that they are going to work under. And also with the new city council. So it's, to me, it's rushed. And I know that Ms., one of the newly elected council persons just said, "Why offer three years? What's gonna happen? The same thing you did with the past city manager? She wasn't liked, for whatever reason. We get rid of her, we put her on administrative leave and pay them for money that the city doesn't have." Why is this being rushed through when you only have two more, I mean, two more weeks before the new people come in? And with all due respect, like I said, I don't know neither one of the individuals. I've heard a few things about one, but I am, it's not my job to bring it to the table or why or the issue. My concern here is that this appears, and apparently not only to me, but to the community, that this is a rush act on your part. Your current interim city manager is not gonna be working with these people. And I don't care, I don't wanna hear, "Well, you know what? People from the county and from El Centro, whatever, recommended them." So it has to be a team in order to work effectively. The community has spoken. We're gonna have new people everywhere and that's fine. And I'm in agreement, because I am not going to spill hate like others. Yes, my horse is lost, fine. And I'm fine with that. And I'm looking forward to working with the new elected council as a community member. And I'm gonna be here every time that I have a question or a concern, and this is one of them. And I'm glad that Station Number 2, which started by others and by the person that was let go, that it was finally finished. But I urge you to reconsider what you're about to do. And if you're gonna, if you have to go through it, then do it for one year with an option of whatever, or an option of whatever, or just wait the two weeks, because it is for them. Because if the person that's brought in board has a city manager, if there's no chemistry, they're not gonna work, it's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. We've been seeing that for years. So think about it and consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have more comments on item #9 from Consent. Victor Rocha, item #9. Yolanda Cunningham, item #9.
Buenas noches ya de nuevo. Básicamente es lo mismo, básicamente es lo mismo como dijeron las personas. No es nada personal, honestamente, no es nada en contra de la señorita, no es nada en contra del joven. Solamente lo que estamos tratando de verdad es que ustedes como consejeros de veras entiendan que es importante que vengan las mejores personas preparadas a Caléxico. Nosotros no queremos tener... tenemos muchas necesidades aquí pero también queremos claridad, de verdad claridad en los procedimientos. Queremos tener... queremos salir de este problema, de este bache en el que estamos. Queremos sentir los ciudadanos confiabilidad en nuestras concejales, en nuestro administrador de la ciudad. Yo personalmente sé que el señor Contreras está esforzando mucho, sé que el señor Contreras es una buena persona pero sé que él va quizás en un futuro regresar a su puesto y como lo comentaron creemos que, lo que dijo la señora, creemos que las personas nuevas que entren deben de tener... hacer equipo con los nuevos consejeros y con el nuevo administrador de la ciudad para que todo esto trabaje bien para todos. Y cuando todo esto, cuando trabaja bien todo para todos esto se ve reflejado en la comunidad. Entonces yo por favor de verdad, no quiero... quizás pido disculpas a las personas que no las quiero ofender, a las personas que están aplicando pero que entiendan también de veras el punto de vista de los ciudadanos. Solamente queremos que acceda el procedimiento, que se haga con claridad, saber cuántas personas aplicaron y lo que ya les comenté y nosotros esperamos de nuestros consejeros pues que tomen la decisión prudente de verdad. Porque cada vez que nos paramos aquí yo... es un desgaste emocional, es un desgaste, es demasiada... nos produce malestar el tener que venir, las señoras cuando tenemos que estar atendiendo a nuestras familias. Yo no debería estar preocupada en estar aquí y pidiéndole a mis consejeros porque yo deposité, voté por ellos y deposité mi confianza en ellos y yo sé que van a tomar la mejor decisión para su comunidad. Y yo confío, confío en ustedes en que van a ser prudentes y de veras como dijo la señora nuestra nueva consejera, hay que escuchar a la comunidad, escuchen a su comunidad por favor. Eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
Diana Nuricumbo, item #9.
Thank you, I just wanted to add that if it's, like I said last time, if it's a possibility to move forward with these people for a lapse of a year, I believe it's only fair to the new city manager that will be coming in because these are department head positions. I believe it's only fair for the council members that are gonna come in because we kinda feel, you know, we're being thrown a little wrench because we have a platform and we have a plan and now you're making that decision and you're wanting to bring on board two very important positions for a very long time. So that's the only thing I'm requesting to reconsider. As far as you know the candidates, if they're as good as we've heard they are then they shouldn't have a problem having an agreement for a year because you know if they're that good, we're gonna want them to stay longer. Thank you.
Letizia Cota, item #9.
Hi, I thought I had spoken on both earlier so I just wanna reiterate what I said and what everybody else had said and also the fact that I know it seems like we all called each other and decided to come up here and say the same thing but believe me, I didn't speak to anyone. It's my base on what I read on the agenda and my recommendation having seen how this city has worked for the past X amount of years. So if we're starting anew, we need to do things right and we need to allow for the new city manager to be on board and also to be part of the selection of department heads because they're gonna be working with him or her. The other issue is also the city councilman. Come on guys, three of you are gonna... three of you are out of here in two weeks. You guys may wanna become... may wanna come back later, a few years later but for now, I for one wanna see my city successful and to move forward. And by doing stunts like this, that's not what we're... that's kinda like underhanded. And I feel really bad for the two individuals because I'm sure they... it's not their fault but it's the fault of whoever made the decision or whoever made that recommendation or whoever made the negotiation for the amount of years or term. So I would urge you to reconsider tables and wait until the new council come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more comments on Consent.
So now I'll print this back to the council for comments.
I'd like to make a motion in my comments as well. So for me, it's obviously some business decision. I think the people are... I'm not questioning the process, I mean I think it's a lot of uncertainty. I obviously... I side with you. I represent the city of Caléxico, the citizens. This is your tax money and we're gonna spend it. I wanna make sure that we spend wisely and we don't even know that. So there's a lot of uncertainty and I think I'll make a motion to table item 889 for a couple more weeks until the new city council comes in, make those decisions. And also address those concerns that you have. Perhaps work with the city council, city manager. I have Mr. Here, the plan director, well the potential plan director and also the finance director. Nothing personal, it's just a business decision for me. I make that motion. And I hope that my cohorts will join me in that. And I can only make the motion, hopefully it gets approved.
Second motion, item 7, that's okay?
I'm sorry?
Item 7.
889 only.
89 is tabled.
Oh, you wanna go 7 too?
7 is for the minutes.
Sure.
Can we table item 8 and 9?
Item 9 and approve 7.
Approve 7.
Can we do that, Mr. Campos? Can we do it one more? Okay, yeah.
It could be part of the same motion to table two items and approve one item, correct?
I do agree with both councilmember Moreno and Romo and I am still excited regarding to having our finance and planning director to come in. It is important to have them because without these... without planning we can't have businesses coming in. That's very important. And finance, we have an acting finance director right now so we need a finance director to seriously look at all what's going on regarding to our budgets. So I do concur that the new council should be a part of it. So I do agree in tabling.
Thank you. So going with the roll call.
Mayor Camilo García. Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Telenda is absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. So and thank you Mr. Coin and Ms. Parro. And also please stay on the process and best of luck. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments.
So now we'll move to discussion on potential action items. Number 10, authorize acting city manager to sign change order #2 with Rove Engineering Inc. in the amount of $631,514 for Coal Boulevard between MLK Avenue and Bauker Road Rehabilitation, Federal A Project #STPL516A (135). Stop reporting.
Good evening mayor, councilmembers. Back in July 25th of this year, city council awarded the bid to Rove Engineering for the replacement of asphalt between, on Coal Road between MLK and Bauker. On September 25th, we had our pre-construction meeting where we had Rove Engineering. We had our construction management team from Nicholas Engineering as well as city staff and our contract engineer who prepared the plans and specs. And when we started discussing the project, it was recommended that we hired Sierra Materials and then testing to do the pavement assessment and go out there and core several, I think the 12 sections of Coal Boulevard to make sure that we were gonna be placing the correct asphalt due to the traffic volume that we have. We have vehicle traffic, we also have semi-traffic. The report came back where it requires additional pavement on the northbound West Lane. So we went back to Rove Engineering, requested a price quote and we come before you recommending to approve change order #2. Just a little FYI, we are within the budget that we had originally stipulated and we're within the engineer's estimate.
Thank you.
Yes, Diana Nuricumbo.
Good evening. This seems like deja vu, Fire Station #2. This brings, raises so many red flags in my eyes, I'm sorry but you have a project that was funded $3.1 million and you get a bid for $2.3. And that just kinda tells, I mean numbers tell the story. And what this tells me right away is that somebody bid very low to get this project and then comes back and asks for 100% of the original amount without even starting the work. This is very concerning. I believe that a lot of the citizens agree that this is a practice that we want to change and this is a first change order and it's asking for the entirety of the amount. And when it says that we're not gonna have a fiscal impact, that's not true. Look at what happened to Fire Station #2. How many change orders did we have? Do you think before we even go into this project, we're not gonna have any change orders? Where's that money gonna come from? Like what they're asking for is the entire funding amount. I would honestly be offended to be sitting up there and whoever allowed this to come up before you, it should have been kicked back. And if anything, if it's actually something that needs to get done, put it back out for bid. Because we needed to let these contractors know and let our department know that this isn't gonna continue to happen. Put it out for bid and let somebody else do it. Or if the same contractor wins it, then he wins it. But this is a substantial amount of money, $631,000 for the same contractor. It's just, it's very obvious what's going on here. I also had a concern, if they could explain. This project is gonna cover the only entrance that Heartstone has. The only exit, the only entrance. This community is surrounded by canals. So when they start paving the area in front of Heartstone, do you guys have a plan on how people are gonna get in and out? Because I don't see how, I don't think they're gonna pave in a couple of hours. We're talking days if not weeks in that area. So have you put any money aside for another entrance or another exit? This project just looks like it's gonna be a big headache. I would not approve this and I would wait for the new council to come in and look over what happened with this deal. Thank you.
Joseino Rosa.
Good evening, Joseino Rosa, 1056 F Torres. On behalf of the Heartstone community, I come before you in reference to this project. One of the questions was what Ms. Nuricumbo just asked, how are we gonna get out or how are we gonna get into our homes? Because I don't see in the backup information on the first bid on July 25th, I don't see, I don't even see a map, an area map or what the work is gonna entail. And then on this change order, I don't see any traffic control maps. I don't see any of the backup information. And plus, we're using, it's around $1.4 million of Measure D funds. We had already agreed that we're gonna use Measure D funds to do La Jolla Ponds Boulevard. This is the study. This is a study that says that we're gonna be spending in 2020 $1.1 million to build La Jolla Ponds Boulevard. So whenever we build La Jolla Ponds Boulevard, we're gonna demo Coal Road again and rebuild it? I don't know if, city attorney, can I ask that question to the Public Works Director?
It's public comments, it's up to discretion of the city.
Is this public comments?
Yes, on the item.
I'm not speaking on the agenda item?
Correct, but it's public comments on the agenda item. It's up to discretion of the city.
Oh, it's up to the discretion of city council. Mayor, I don't know if our Public Works Director can answer that question? Yes, I'm directing the question to the mayor.
Well, for the contractor has submitted a traffic control plan. Those that live on La Jolla Ponds will have access. Actually, the contractor will be working at night to alleviate the traffic especially now during the holiday season. As for the item that you showed us, I haven't gotten any direction. Therefore, I cannot provide you an answer as to if it's gonna be done or not because I don't recall it coming to council.
The problem is, you just mentioned La Jolla Ponds. La Jolla Ponds does not exist. It's not built yet.
Palm, it's not, Heartstone I guess.
Yeah, it doesn't exist. Yeah, that's what we're trying to... our community, we only have one entrance so we're non-compliant.
Where she's addressing the issue that they will be working on, the traffic plan to alleviate the heavy traffic during that area. Like Ms. Nuricumbo mentioned, there's only one entrance there and one exit. And not only is it a safety concern for the community that lives there, for PD to get in, for fire to get in and there is a plan in place.
Can we see that plan? I mean, it's a $3 million project.
And we'll provide it on the website for the community to have that plan.
It should be on the backup information. So I would highly recommend that we table this item like the item before until the new council comes in because it's $600,000 that are gonna come from Measure D funds that, you know, we paid $15 million for our bond, Heartstone. And you know, we need our entrance and that should be a priority. That should be a priority. If we're gonna spend $3 million on Coal Road and then re-spend it again when we build La Jolla Ponds Boulevard and demo Coal Road again, I mean, why are we spending twice on the same item? I highly recommend mayor and council to reconsider this item, table it. New council comes in and then we start planning and we start doing all of our diligent work. Thank you.
No more public comments.
So I'll bring this back to this council for comments.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to not approve this. Let me tell you why, my reasons. Here we go again, another change order. You know, when you have a company, a construction company who does a study and survey, whatever they do, they should know if it's gonna be a million dollars and that's it, no less, no more. I mean, there's contingency that happens, like maybe the weather, something happens but we have companies that know that and to have a change order that amount, for me it's just, at this point, yeah. Among other things, the other thing I had a question. Like Mr. Ojoza said, why we're not, if you're already paving Coal Road, why, what's happening from Rockwood to MLK? What happened to that stretch? And then what happens to the entrance through the Heartstone, what was proposed many, many years ago? What happened to that one? What happened to that one? You see, there's a lot of bear, there's a lot of issues for me, concerns that, and so right now, I'm not comfortable with, so I'll make a motion not to approve it until all those things I meant, and specifically, when you guys get here next two weeks.
Comments?
I'd like to make the motion to table it.
So, Mr. Moreno had already made a motion to, not approve or table.
It's not approved.
Well, it has to come back, because it's a project, so table it.
Table, okay, second.
Yeah.
Just wanted to let you guys know that if this item is tabled, it's going to be sending us back. The contractor has, well, will be starting, so just an FYI.
Thank you. So, any more comments from council? I think that, Rocko.
Who's second motion?
Mr. Moreno and Dana, second by Ms. Romo.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand is absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we move to item number 11, the resolution approving adopting an amended conflict of interest code pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 1974. Public comment, I mean, stop report on that.
We have.
So, the resolution approving the amending of the conflict of interest is something that has been done yearly or every two years through the city clerk's office. The Political Reform Act of 1974 required that public agencies adopt and maintain the conflict of interest code. The act further required that the agencies regularly review, update their codes if necessary as directed by the code reviewing body, and when change is necess, necessitated by changed circumstance. The city council is, the city's code reviewing body, as the code reviewing body, city council directed the code to be reviewed as required by the, under the act, and if a change in the code was necessary, that a revised code be present and submitted to the city council for adoption and approval.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on that?
Victor Rocha.
Here we go again. It's the same issue. Has to do with your acting city manager. If you notice, he's not presenting to you which positions are being added and which positions are being deleted. We don't know as a community why we're doing this. Like, he says, okay, it's the law, but which positions are you removing? It's critical for us to know. And I think it's critical for you guys to know as well, and which positions are being added, and since when they were added, because he says, it's talking about two years. I don't think you've added positions in the last, what, six years? So, why the urgency to do something at last minute? So, my, my, my request for you is please, get that information before you act, not only you, but the rest, the new council members as well. Because it's critical for you to know who has a conflict and who doesn't, and why you're removing someone, and what is the justification to remove them. Anyone that participates in the, in the budget process has a conflict of interest. Anyone that requests expenditures has a conflict of interest. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Alejandra Guerrero.
Yeah, if I could just help clarify, this is an item that agencies do this across the state every two years. What happens is that during the two-year process, sometimes you create positions, you delete them, and all this does is provide what disclosure category under Form 700 you have. If you notice employees, and obviously, the closer you are to finance, the more disclosures you have under Form 700. By law, the council has to file Form 700, city manager, myself, for employees, the code provides what level of disclosure the employees provide. And if you notice, in the packet, it's a red line copy that shows the positions that were created since the last adoption or deleted. It's just a cleanup item that comes every two years, and all it does is say for that position, here's your disclosure requirements under state law, depending on what the top descriptions requires. That's what it provides.
Thank you.
Alejandra Guerrero.
Buenas noches. Yo tengo una preocupación. Este, yo miro que el señor Legaspi, este, pues es nuestro vecino. Y pues no me ha tocado la oportunidad de verlo por el vecindario. Pero me preocupa también su casa y su bienestar, porque ahí en la esquina tenemos las canchas de béisbol, y no tienen redes. Esas redes, este, son necesarias para el parque. Me gustaría que, pues como usted está aquí, pues que, que reconsidere, que comente, que les diga también a sus compañeros el apoyo que necesitamos para, para hacer ese cambio.
Señora Guerrero, es el comentario en el...
No, 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 yo, yo sé, pero era algo que yo tenía dentro de mi...
Sí, pero tiene que ser el comentario en el, en el punto que estamos tratando ahorita. Gracias.
No more public comments.
Okay, so I'll bring this back to this council for a comment. So, you already have made a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay, I don't, I'm, I'm already make a second, or you're not, I mean, I'm going to make a comment, can I, can I do it?
Sure.
Okay, so, the attorney just explained to us in about a minute, minute and a half, what it's all about, but yet, why can't it be on a report exactly what he said? Well, I know, but in claim interest, because I think what's, the misunderstanding, some people don't really understand that, right? The legalities of that. I don't, personally, I, I don't, I have an idea, because I do talk to them, but I think it's not really, really clear what the citizens are, are asking, or at least some uncertainties you have on that. Perhaps maybe, like the attorney said, it's just a legality, but perhaps maybe we can have another report on it tabled, and then can we give another report, and come with more clarification, maybe more language that, that appeals to the citizens, so the citizens can understand that. So, that's my...
So, you made a motion or not?
No, because she made her motion.
Well, second.
I don't second it, no.
So, any more comments from the council? I think that I'll second, that item, Rocko.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
No.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
No.
Councilmember Lisa Thailand is absent.
Thank you, so it does. Yeah, so.
All right, so we'll go ahead and then move to item number 12, approval of Master 200
City Council Meetings for calendar year 2025. Do you have any public comment on that? Do you have any comments from the council?
No, I just, just want to close on one item, Mr. Mayor, is that, and I ran into this problem last night, because I've brought it to your attention, but I think if we, we did the calendar, I think there was a, we weren't black on August, right?
Yeah.
And does this include this as well, right?
Well, and if not, the council can decide.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
So, any more comments, or if I have a motion for approval?
Second, I mean, I'm sorry, so move.
Second.
Second.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Council member Lisa Thailand is absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we move to informational items. Item 13, local appointments list 2025 in compliance.
Mayor, I think we have 12A, the emergency item.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that emergency item, thank you. So, we'll go back to 12A, and that's an emergency item. Approval of MOU between the City of Callexico and Imperial County Department of Public Health, County and the City of Callexico Fire Department Service Provider, and approval of resolution number 2024 dash whatever numbers assigned.
So, the recommendations that the city council approved the proposed ordinance related to the MOU facilitates upgrade to the City of Callexico Fire Department's electronic medical reporting system under the ARPA Act, aiming to enhance medical response capabilities, data accuracy, compliance, federal and state law regulations. So, a little background on this, Chief Lannister came into the Imperial County Fire Department as the new chief. He oversaw all, all the operations of what needed to be done. The county pretty much moved into moving the, to a new electronic software system. Before, it was emergency reporting system. Now, it's called ESO Suite, which we had transitioned over to our department back in this May. So, we had spent some money on getting this up and live, running. It took, it did take some time, it did start with Chief Avila, and carried over to Acting Chief Aenza, and now, under, you know, Acting Chief as well. So, what Mr. Lannister did is that he saw some surplus monies available under his ARPA for the softwareing program. He noticed there was a need throughout the county, for all the county to be under one softwareing program, so it would be respond to the county, respond to all central, respond anywhere else, and other agencies were all using the same system. So, what he proposed is to enter the county board of supervisors, because they did have to go through approval, and through the public health department, is to refund all the departments, surrounding departments, the costs that they paid for implementing the system into their department. So, the compensation reimbursement capped out for the City of Callexico at $2,791, contingent on availability, availability of the ARPA funds, clearing invoices requirements and such forth. So, I'm requesting council to recommend to move forward with this MOU that would, that needs to be signed by the end of this month with the public health department, so we can start getting these funds, which are kind of already allocated at the department here locally, to go for equipment. So, knowing that the ARPA funds need to be used by a certain date, we've already kind of anticipated getting these monies back, because it's, it's been four months in the making to use those funds to, for equipment.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
So, any public comments on that?
I have a motion to approve.
Then I'll second, comments from council?
No.
No.
Okay, so Rocko.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailand is absent, motion passes.
Thank you, chief, and hurry up to get those reimbursements and spend them before they expire.
Very appreciated.
Now, we move on to informational items. Item 13, local appointments list 2025 in accordance with the Madi Act, California Government Code 54970.
So, a little background, acknowledged receipt of the report, the California Government Code 54970 states that on the, on or before December 31st of each year, each legislative body shall prepare and appoint all lists of regular or ongoing boards, commissions, committees which are appointed by the legislative body by the local agency. This list shall be known as a local appointments list. This list shall contain the following information, which has all commissions, boards, elected officials, and expiration dates for all members, which obviously will be updated here shortly moving forward with the new council, council members.
Thank you. So, thank you for the information.
Same information.
Now, we move on to item 14, additional information item, Agency Cordova Memorial Park Speed Humps. Background on that.
This, this was an item that was brought to council, which, you know, the members of the community are concerned about the speed bump, speed humps. Ms. Falome was helpful to put a staff report together. On October 25th, the city requested a proposal from Kimley Horn for civil engineering services for the installation of the speed humps on Zapata Street, Clinton Avenue, Meadows Drive, as well as adjacent to Cordova Memorial Park. On November 7th, 2024, Kimley Horn submitted a proposal on the amount of $14,500 for the engineering firm to prepare the plan for the specifications to add the speed bumps around those, those streets, which is between Meadows Drive, Clinton Avenue, and Taft. Another area would be Clinton Avenue between East Zapata Street and Meadows Drive. And, you know, just for clarification, these funds will be coming out of Division 978 Parks Improvement Division, which is also part of the tax that is collected in that area that they're paying for, that goes back to that community and, and those streets. Just for clarification, because it's, on the staff report, it does give a number, but I want to make that on record as to far, where these funds are coming from, and it's actually coming from how, you know, they mentioned, what are our taxes going to? And it's going to go to this type of project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, and that's, obviously, it's been the talking point for the last couple of meetings, the speed bump, and so, and I'm familiar with the area, is it going to pass, is it, those speed bumps, where, where, where the, the last one's going to be placed?
So, be Meadows Drive between Clinton Avenue, and I think Taft is on the north side.
Uh huh, okay.
And then Clinton Avenue between Zapata and Meadows Drive. So, I think along the, this way, and along the east, west, north, south.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor, we have comment on item 14.
Okay, thank you.
Yolanda Cunningham.
Pues yo estoy muy agradecida, gracias, gracias por escucharnos, porque es una necesidad que tenemos de años. Y tristemente solo hemos muchas veces los mismos residentes que manejamos a exceso de velocidad. Quiero agradecerles porque de esa manera pues vamos a estar un poco más tranquilos y también pues para, sé que hay más gente, más familias, juntamos 180 firmas, Alejandra los juntó básicamente ella, yo junto unas pocas de mis vecinos, pero básicamente ella se dio el trabajo de, de colectar esas firmas. La comunidad, yo sé que va a estar muy contenta, sé que va a haber vecinos que no van a estar contentos, porque son la gente que no queremos respetar las vialidades, no hacer altos, entonces sé que van a tener, van a tener gente molesta llamándoles, pero saben que la generalidad es un bien común para la comunidad, y asimismo pues nada más me cabe. Señor Contreras, muchas gracias, gracias por trabajar en eso, y pues, de que van a usar, de eso se trata. Si van a utilizar, entendí que el señor Contreras acaba de explicar que van a utilizar dinero de, de los impuestos que pagamos para la comunidad, y precisamente para eso es el dinero que pagamos, para que nos mantengan esa área segura, para que nos mantengan el parque, que por favor lo tomen en cuenta, y pues también este, las calles que tenemos estamos esperando impacientemente nuestras calles, la cola está destrozada, y la gente va a estar contenta, yo estoy segura. Se lo agradecemos a nombre de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias y gracias por, por escucharnos.
Alejandra Guerrero.
Buenas noches. Miren, este, ya les había comentado que a mí me, me interesa que haya un topé de frente de mi casa, y, y casa le daña de mis vecino, porque tenemos varios niños con autismo en esa área. Son niños que no miden el peligro, que salen corriendo en cuanto uno abre la puerta, a veces por descuido por el garaje. Entonces, me gustaría que dieran a conocer los, el mapa de los topes, porque no nomás mi calle, o sea, cuando fui a tocar casa por casa, porque así me tomé la molestia, duré cinco días en, en, en darme las tardes con mi familia, este, vi muchas necesidades de la comunidad, y muchos comentarios sobre eso. Les agradezco que hayan atendido mi, mi, mi petición, así como también nosotros decimos en qué, qué nos hace falta, también hay que darle las gracias a lo que sí se atiende, no? Y, y reconocer la, la administración de lo que está haciendo. Gracias.
Okay, so now, that was just informational item. Now, I know Chief Roscoe is ready, but since Councilwoman Thailand had requested, can we just...
I will wait for the 18th to have her here.
Thank you, chief.
Sorry.
Standby. Okay, so now, we move on to item 16, information, informational item, discovering road between SR 19, excuse me, SR 98 and Cold Boulevard.
So, I know Mr. Legaspi here had asked about getting Cold, Scaroni Road repaved. I think this has been... I think this has been a long time in the making. And Ms. Falemy was able to put a staff report together requiring what, what has the backstory, right? This, this project has been going on since 2019, right? Ms. Falemy and Public Works brought to staff, brought to council, report for engineering services. Obviously, again, we don't have an engineer, we haven't had one in a long time. We contract out to get the infrastructure done first, meaning sewer, water, lift station number nine, lift station number 11, to redo, I think it was Bernardo, Hacienda, Scaroni, to get, have all that work done with, with the infrastructure first before you do a repavement, right? Because it makes sense to do the underground first before you repaint. So this was brought to the council on the first time, September 3rd, 2019. It was brought back to the council April 24th, 2021. It was brought back to the council on January 19th, 2022. October 18th, 2023. And these are all amendments number one and the amount of 25,000, and another amount of 20, 30,000, another amount of 520 for Lee and Row to find the specification for the project to be started March 2024 with an estimated cost of 9.6 to redo not only the infrastructure underneath, but the whole Scaroni 98 to Cole. Unfortunately, on October 2nd, 2024, the city council approved not to adopt the proposed water and sewer rates that were going to help with the cost of this project. So that's where we stand on the whole Scaroni and Frontage Road repavement. So I believe until we look into funding to redo the infrastructure, sewer, lift station number nine, lift station number 11, manholes, gutters, sidewalks, before we get the road repaved, we should look into that first before moving on with this project. And that would be again for the new council to come decide and to see how we want to pursue with, with this Frontage Road.
Thank you. Questions coming? So now we move on to future agenda items.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. Like to direct the chief of police to do a stop sign traffic study off of Meadows and Nixon for a stop sign. See if we need a stop sign there, chief. Trash cans, if we can put more trash cans at the, on Cordova Park, it's being requested. Also, is there any way of putting a small basketball court on Clinton Avenue? I mean, on Cordova Park? If you can look into that possibility? That's all I have.
What, what was the first ask for the chief?
Traffic stop study he has to do, in order for us to put a stop sign, he's got to do a traffic stop study.
Chief Orozco, mayor, has also asked for a few minutes in reference to some events that are upcoming for PD.
Go ahead, you know, you have the floor. Sorry about that.
No worries, mayor, thank you. I kind of wanted to use the end of my speech for the red curbs to, can I give the public a little announcements? So December 11th, we're doing our Kids and Badges, it's our annual event. We invite the city council and also the new members, they're not here yet, but to come join us, Denny's for Breakfast. The more the merrier. We're doing 30 kids again, ages of kindergarten to junior high. And then we've kind of, again, outdid ourselves this year. We're going to do another 22 teenagers the next day and take them shopping to the outlets, kind of spread the love a little bit. So, but the main, main event's going to be December 11th for our annual Kids and Badges. Multiple agencies are going to come help out, the helicopter's going to bring Santa in, and the kids are going to go on a shopping spree with the law enforcement officer and spend $150 for them. So it's something that we're very proud of. And again, city council, new and old, is invited to attend. And I wanted also.
How old is this?
What's that?
How old is this?
This is 21 years.
21 years.
This is the 21st year. Last year was the 20th, so we tried to outdo ourselves, and we did about 50 kids. So this time we're doing 52, but we're spreading it out because we haven't done high school there at all. And so we're kind of looking out for kids that are doing good at school, that, that are in need and kind of rewarding them for, for being good students, good citizens of, for, you know, the city. Also, what do you call it? Wanted also make mention that we're going to be having a town hall meeting as requested by a city council person in reference to the downtown safety, the meters altogether on the 17th at 5:30 here at the city council chamber. The public's welcome. It's going to be back and forth, so if you have any questions, any comments, complaints, that's where you come on in. And it's, I believe it's our third one now that we've had town hall meetings. So that way, you know, you have a direct line to the police chief. A lot of city council members come to, say here, all that the complaints are. So everybody's invited to come, show up and to attend that meeting. And that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot to mention on December 12, we're doing a employee appreciation Christmas luncheon at the community center. And it would be, we're picking up plates from Maranata for all city employees.
Mister Contreras and chief, we need information about the increase in Callexico taxis, transportation. When and how was the increase from five to six fifty? Thank you.
Stop.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just thank you. Okay, so, um, um, so a point of reference for, for, for some issues that happened tonight in the city council and will serve us well to do this, and my recommendation for the new plan director is I've always been in support of a project review committee. As you know, it's very, a project review committee is important for any development process, especially projects. Because it, when you have a project review committee, they, they tackle everything before you bring the project for approval or the process, right? And it talks about zoning, regulation, and things of that nature. But most importantly, what it does, it avoids exactly what happened tonight and it's been occurring for, since I've probably been here. And no harm in foul, we're all learning. But I think a, a project review committee would help us make a better decisions to avoid projects of being put on hold because there's a lot of stakeholders in this. And it does that, and also what it does, it avoids surprises. Not only approach surprises, but it also takes care of the budget. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayers in Callexico are the ones who pay for this project, for this project. Whether if it comes from the federal or from the state, where taxpayers pay for it. And when we, when we have these things like this and we trying to nickel and diamond uncertainties and it just doesn't look good. And then we enter into the realm of, is it transparent, something's going on, it just gets crazy. So a project review committee, I hope the new city council member, members that are here, the city manager were here to this and take my recommendation. So when it pass muster, then you don't have that, all you do is, and you also have the citizens involved with the project review committee. And it'll serve us well to avoid projects of putting, putting on hold on table. Because I don't like doing that. I like to get the projects done. But I think we should earn ourselves enough for it if we don't have a project review committee. And that's my, my point.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My only future agenda item, chief, if we can look into the council reorg for next week between Wednesday or Thursday. Due to the fact that, you know, there are many decisions that have to be made, the longer we wait, the more liabilities that can be incurred. So because of that and because, you know, the citizens, you know, are really excited to, to meet and, and start working with the new leadership that is coming to this council. So if you can look into the council reorg for next week, Wednesday or Thursday. So whatever, yeah, whatever fits best for, for, you know, the planning of that meeting. Thank you. And with that, if I can get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailand is absent, motion passes.
So now we adjourn at 8:51 PM.